This is certification in close session pursuant to subsection 2-23712 D of the Virginia Freedom Amendment, each member of the Board of Supervisors. Up on road code, road code certifies that to the best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom Information Act and only such public business matters were identified, motions by which closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from their requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe that the departure has taken place? Being known, if you agree that matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify it by saying yes or yea. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Glenn Wallace?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Steve Brady?
Yes.
Harry Ferguson?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have your word for returning to the session.
All right, at this time we'll have our invocation, Jane Stanley, that Seder Point Baptist Church. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Father, we truly love you tonight. God, we thank you for the privilege and opportunity to be gathered here together. And we thank you for these servants who are willing to stand forward and represent this county. Thank you for the freedoms Lord will be have here in this country to still meet together. And God, most importantly, I thank you for a Savior. Thank you, Lord, for dying on that old rugged cross for our sin. Or help us tonight as we meet together here, give us wisdom, discernment, and direction in all things, or we ask it all in Jesus' sweet name.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time we need approval of our agenda, but I believe we have two items that we need to add to the agenda. Number fourteen, excuse me, fifteen, under the county administrator, it is Sheriff Dye to have a reimbursement to the Department of Justice in the amount of $1,200. And under the county attorney, we have to have a motion concerning bylaws of the PSA. No, that was to be under the attorney's reports. Number five, under the attorney's reports. And fifteen is under Roncey's reports.
Chairman, make a motion to amend the adjourned agenda. I believe that's too long.
And Luke's second. Stand forth. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Now, at this time, we have approved the agenda. Now, we will go to presentations. Pat Gray with the Constitutional Week Resolution. Pat.
Well?
I have it, and I will read it. This is Constitutional Week, whereas September the 17th, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitutional Convention, whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document in the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will meant raise the occasion, whereas public law 15 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 15th through the 23rd, 2019, as Constitutional Week. Now therefore, the request of Tabitha Adams, Russell County Chapter of the National Society of the Dollars of the American Revolution, I, Rebecca Dye, Chairman of the Russell County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September the 17th through the 23rd to be Constitutional Week in Russell County, to ask the citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution in 1787.
Chairman, make a motion if we approve this and authorize you to sign this document for the DAR.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Tim? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right. Ms. Payton, I'll sign these for you and get copies to you. All right, our second presentation tonight is John Watson with VDOT, Russell County Secondary Road Requirements.
Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you all for singing tonight. We've had a few questions come up to the department recently regarding what roadways are eligible to be included into the state secondary system. So we wanted just to come out and give a very brief overview of the process. By code of Virginia, the Board of Supervisors in each county has to formally request a roadway to be added into the secondary system. Once the board has approached VDOT asking us to add the road into the system, we work with the county and we coordinate a review of the roadway to see if it's eligible to come into the system. Typically, this review includes looking at the right-of-way, the width of the roadway, utilities, the number of homes, and things of that nature. If the road is found to meet the requirements, at that point in time, we'll help prepare estimated costs and other issues needed for the county to make a decision on whether the roadway should be brought into the system. Normally, we find a lot of situations where there's additional right-of-way needed, and I'll touch on right-of-way here in just a moment, but for somewhere turnaround or cul-de-sacs, a lot of times it's drainagesments and things like that that may be needed. If everything's found to be acceptable, at that point in time, we look at what funding is available, and if the funding's available, the roadway can be brought or built. Once that has happened, the road's inspected, the Board of Supervisor makes a formal request for us to bring it into the system. At that point in time, if everything meets the requirements, we accept it into the state system, we'll give it a route number, and then we'll make it part of the secondary system. Now, a couple of the issues that we run into are just some general eligibility requirements. You're basically got two types of roadways. You've either got private roads or public roads. If it is a public road for it to come into the state system, you must have a public right-of-way on it that has been deeded for 20 years. So there must be an established public right-of-way on the road for a minimum of 20 years. It must be open to public use 24 hours a day, 24 days a week, 365 days a year. The minimum right-of-way while accepted in the system is 40 feet. A lot of times 50 is preferred, but the minimum is 40. Must have the adequate drainagesments. Sometimes those drainage structures need to go all the way to a natural water course or a waterway. You have to have at least three occupied homes on the roadway, and those homes must be under separate ownership, or a roadway can connect to state grounds. A lot of towns, we look at a lot of these areas, and it may be, pick on Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Ferguson owns three homes up there, and he's renting two out of the land. That does not qualify. It's going to be three homes, three separate owners, and things of that nature to be held on. If you've got the general eligibility requirements, and I'm not going to get into all the, you know, the right-of-way and all that stuff, then that's when we start identifying funding. Couple different funding sources. One is revenue sharing funds, where the county can apply to the state for a one-to-one ratio match of funds. Revenue sharing applications are done every other year on odd years. So this year being 2019, revenue sharing applications are being submitted in. The projects must start within a year of allocated, and again, they'll look at the 20-year established guidelines for public use. It is up to the county to determine where that match comes from, which can be quite expensive. The other issue is to use 100% local funds, and the county can use that from general revenue, bond sales, assessments, whatever the county decides to do, and the county can pay for it 100%. The other option is by code, you can use 5% of your six-year plan funds for qualifying roads to be brought into the state system. Normally, that's a small portion, as you all are aware, and in some situations, it may take 20, 25 years to ever bring a road into the system, but it's put 5%. And normally, what we found, construction costs and inflation exceed what you're putting toward it, and it's not a very viable option. Some of the biggest issues we run into that we face preparing the cost assessments, again, looking at the subbase underneath the road, getting the proper width of the roadway, getting the proper asphalt depth, ditches, drainage structures, and things of that nature that can really affect the estimates. We've looked at a few recently, as the board's aware of, and you know, you've had estimates of $300,000, $400,000. Mr. Wester and myself looked at one not long ago, and I think we quit at about a half million, and we hadn't even, you know, got everything calculated up. We'd just got to the point that what was needed up there was just going to far and see anything we could come up with funding. The other option that is, well, let me back up. That's on everything I'm talking about, what they dedicated, public use right-of-way for 20 years. A lot of these roadways we look at do not have a dedicated public use. They're what we consider private roads. The property owner's property runs to the middle of the road. They may have an easement or some type of right-of-way to access. A lot of those roadways are not eligible to come into the system unless the citizens or the developer pays 100% of the cost. We have a large number of those private roads still entering in the county that we get approached with a lot and bringing them to the system, and those would be 100% up to either the folks that live in that area or the developer. Most cases I've dealt with, you're not going to get a developer to come back once they sold lots and build a street to space now. It's very seldom that that ever happens. But that's just a quick, general overview of how the process works. If the county has any specific ones they would like us to look at, we're more than welcome to entertain. We're a little hesitant just to have citizens call us and go out and start preparing a lot of estimates, because again, if it's something that the county's not interested in pursuing, it's not a good use of my manpower and my resources. But if the county has any you want us to look at, we'd be more than glad to do that, include you in preparation of the estimate and what the requirements would be. But a lot of folks are surprised when they start looking at asphalt and right-of-ways and different things like that, and it really affects the estimates. And again, we've had a couple of them that they get up in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in a real hurry to try to retrofit. And in some cases, not always, but in some cases, it's almost like remodeling a home. A lot of times, you can build new construction cheaper than you can retrofit and remodel, and a lot of times we've run into this on roadways where we're trying to stay close to what the original alignment was and deal with some of those issues. I didn't get into the specifics on getting in like grades and asphalt structures and things of that nature, but those are things we get into when we actually prepare the system. So very brief, I told Lonzo I would try to keep this to a couple minutes. Is there any questions that anyone may have regarding roads coming into the system?
Under six-year plan, I'm taking them in order how it would be done. Wait, under six-year plan, you're taking them in order by the way you...
No, that's totally up to the board to place them on. Once they're on the six-year plan, it's kind of first come, first served.
So they have to be on six-year plan first?
Years ago, many years ago, there was a priority list that we had, and everything on the priority list either made it to the six-year plan or was deemed that there was just no funding available, there was no right-of-way, there was some type of issue they removed. And that last one, I'm thinking Mr. Ferguson was back around '06, '07, so it's been well over 10 years since we've had a priority list to try to bring those up into the system.
I have a question about the speed limit. How do you, I mean, I've had people ask, we want a speed limit on this road, or we want a traffic light on this road. I mean, what, what do we, how do we do that? Is that even under our...
Yeah, we review those requests if the board makes those. We look at speed requests, and we can do a traffic study. The county's required to pay for that traffic study, and they can vary from $1,000, $1,500 to $4,000, $5,000, $6,000, $10,000 maybe. Depends on the roadway and how much detail you get into. But we do conduct speed studies, and it's based off the 85% time. So when we go out there and we run radar, or we do checking on it, whatever, 85% of the traffic's running, that's the moment where the speed limit ends up falling. In a lot of situations, people are requesting something like 25, and we'll go out there and it ends up being 45 or something like that. And we throw out extremes on one extreme or the other. When we've done the bypass, for instance, and it went to the speed limit there, I had a couple at 90. So, you know, I kind of throw those. Yeah, I throw those out, and you know, you get a couple at 40, and you get to check them, and maybe it's somebody following a wide load or something like that, and you kind of throw some of those that skew it out, and you look at what your true data is. But that's how we handle speed limit requests. A lot of times, we also work with the state police and the sheriff's department, you know, it's something enforceable, and where do we think the speed limit should fall? If it's residential, dead-end roads, we've got a little leeway to post those a little different way, but that's in a nutshell how that works. As far as a red light goes, that request is made through the board, just like bringing roads into the system, red lights or something, you've got to determine how you're going to fund. Red lights can easily get into the hundreds of thousands of dollars, half a million dollars or more, depending on what you're doing. We'll look at a lot of the crash data and see if it meets the requirements for the red lights based on the traffic, the accidents, and then what's taking place. We're actually looking at trying to reduce the number of red lights on Route 19, 460, some of the other places in the area, because sometimes it can create traffic backups. If you've got something that comes in that's really generating a lot of traffic, then a red light might be required. But in a lot of situations, most of your major intersections like 1958, 8019, most of those intersections in the county already have red lights. So new requests would be based on something coming in, like a good industrial park where you've got Walmart and restaurants and a lot of development taking place. And on those situations, though, that's the developer's responsibility to install that red light.
Something like the federal, the ultimate corridors, traffic signal request comes in, the city's policy is to look at, kind of innovative intersections, roundabouts, R-cuts, and that nature. I don't think you have to do that. You've got to look at that before you decide whether to signal, and while that's what you're receiving. Back to that. That's all.
Yeah. We're probably not going to put roundabouts, if you're familiar with roundabouts, on 19, but a lot of, a lot of other roads, they're getting very popular. I'm real familiar with an area in North Carolina, and the town in North Carolina took every red light they had in town out. There's not a single red light in the town anymore, and they went to total roundabouts. And then Steve may be familiar with R-cuts, I don't know what the rest of you are, but I can get you some information on what an R-cut looks like. And basically, it limits your turning movements and forces you to maybe go right only, go up the road, turn around and come back to be able to go in, limiting some of those turning motions. Do what? Single, single.
Once everybody gets used to the roundabouts, they're great.
They work pretty well. Once, once you get used to them, the ones in Blacksburg were fabulous up there. We've got a couple here in the district that seem to work well. The ones in the city of Bristol seem to function pretty good. So once everybody gets comfortable with them. Roundabouts are the best way to go on, I guess, lower-speed roadways, but, you know, once you start getting on, you know, four lanes, you're pretty well happy to look. But even there, we're looking at, can ramp speed put in, is something different. So intersection improvements versus a red light.
I was just going to say, one of the biggest concerns that I have is like Route 80 from the traffic light to the top of hill at the little convenience store in front of the Harman's Clinic in there.
Yeah, and you will get some traffic queuing up and backing up on higher-volume towns, but it's a little tough for the red lights to keep up based on the traffic.
How are you going to look at horizontal issues? You know, we've got one or two up in the Rosedale area where, you know, if you're coming up through there doing 55 or 60 miles an hour, and it's where a road is being cut in there and turned out, you could easily, you know, waste the money out right there.
Yeah, we try to look at...
Even over in Castlewood, you know, right down...
Right. We try to look at that from a, if it's an entrance, a private entrance, we try to look, you know, get the best-case scenario based on the side distance. And then some of them on the state roads, we try to look for advanced warning, and we do try to do that on our signals. You've noticed we've got some flashing lights up regarding folks at the signals getting ready to change. And a couple of the areas, what you'll notice in Oakwood and in Richland, in Cedar Bluff, we've put the traffic head over on the pole itself, where you can actually see it when you've come around, when you've got horizontal alignment issues.
He actually came up to Roseville with me, with Ronson and myself, and looked at a place there with just the grade of it, the hill of it, and turned into a private drive. They couldn't even put mirrors, couldn't widen it. I mean, the guy who worked helped us, but that little road couldn't do it.
That was the one going to the nursing home, right?
The one in the nursing home there.
October 1st in Castlewood, one in the evening, and right down the bottleneck, it stood a big bull. That made me a person. Well, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know sometimes I might get thrown in your side over boots in my area, but, because I call, when I have people call us, and I appreciate what you guys do to answer those questions. I think a good idea would be to publish the information you've just stated to us on our website, give the public an understanding of what the requirements are. Sometimes it's hard for us to explain all that to just, you know, people on private drives, you know what I'm saying? But I think from our perspective, if we could publish that on our website, that detailed information that you just specified to us, would be good for the public to understand what those requirements are. I know I have one or two I could meet, and some I couldn't meet on a particular road. The right-of-way was in the living room of two or three houses. That was the situation, and, you know, when you run into that, you know, they don't understand, well, you know, can you not head up to my neighbor's yard and go like this?
But we turn that, we can give the information to the county and make it available to the planning commission also.
I appreciate that. That would be great. That would be great. Hands-on highway community.
And some sources that we have that can walk you through. But again, any time that citizens or you want us to look at, we don't have a problem taking a look at it as long as we feel it's a viable project. And the same thing with speed limits, red lights, whatever the case may be. And any work requests that you have, by all means, contact me, contact Lonzo, Jeff. A lot of times, it's situations we're aware of, but a lot of times it's not. So without having someone bring it to our attention that there's a dead tree, there's concern about falling into the road, or maybe a roadway's got a spot breaking off on the outward shoulder or something like that, it's good to know that information, that, well, we can go check it out.
I have two questions, two from different groups. Any road coming down from Big Eagle Mountain, 80, it's 25. All right, if you come from the other side, New Garden Road, you come down from any road, there is no speed limit.
Correct.
Okay, I think it needs to be addressed because they...
Yeah, I would imagine that the sign has been stolen and damaged, something has happened, and we'll take a look at that on getting the sign put back up.
Okay, and the other one is from Cleveland Road, Archer Road, it's 35. But they said due to a real rustic on the other side of the bridge, where it goes up the railroad track, and it becomes a 55 speed limit sign on the same Archer Road.
No, all it should be 35 to there.
I'll double check. I don't think it is my position, I think, because you're right. The portion of your road, my policy, definitely not 35.
So that may be another one that the signage is missing, it's not there for some reason. We'll take a look at it. No, they should all be 35. I'm familiar with that road, and it should be 35 to all that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I guess two-part, one for you and then one for my board, but for these that are the dedicated public use roads, you know, you and I have just recently discussed one, do we need to, I guess, all vote to ask you to do the check on that one, or...
No, that's up to, that's up to the board. As long as, you know, there's some interest, I guess is where I'm coming from. A lot of these, we don't have a problem running out and taking a few minutes to look at. We've been doing it long enough that I'm not going to be on the money, but I'm in the ballpark when we start throwing some numbers out there. And so I don't have a problem going out and looking at it individually, and that way you've kind of got an idea of, hey, we're looking at $250,000, or we're looking at $100,000, or whatever the case may be. And then if you want to start, well, yeah, let's start fine-tuning these estimates, let's start entertaining all this, then we can go through the questions. And some of this gets pretty time-consuming, looking at plaques and trying to do some deep research, and getting into when was it constructed, who was constructing it, do we need to drill it or do different things? It can get pretty time-consuming. We don't have any issue doing that, but it is good to know that you've got some, some board support, because if not, I've got staff that's doing nothing but estimating new additions versus other things they need to be doing. There's a, as you all are all aware, there's a large number of these roadways within the county. I would say the majority of them fall into this private sector, unfortunately, but there's still a few that are public roadways, but a large number fall in that private sector category. Yes. Well, and that was stopped, when did it? Yeah, 2005. I was telling Jeff about that coming in, that it'd been quite a while, but there was a large number of them prior to 2005 that are still out here in the county.
There's at least 30, I think we counted, one, there's 30 major ones that's still out there. Really? Yeah, there's quite a few.
That's all, it's got quite a few homes on, a bit of traffic. Yeah. Couple of them still gravel, I believe. All right, any other questions the board may have?
I have a couple, I have a couple statements. You know, VDOT, county works, you know, really well to get the traffic determined, what we have and what we don't. There was a couple routes that were mentioned. Route 80 was one of them. We cut that project three different times trying to make it score high enough to be able to get that truck route coming up Route 80 into the bottleneck in. And each time, the Transportation Board has not scored it high enough. Even though it's a major safety, it has the highest number of incidents on it in the county, those, it did not make the score. The second thing I wanted to point out, too, you know, we approved one road like this time, and that was Century Farm Road, which was the one to the landfill. We went from multimillion dollars in coal severance. Now, last year was $130,000. That's, that's what we're working with. It's hard to build a road for 100, you know, if John would do it, then that'd be good, but the VDOT, for $130,000, it takes us almost three to four years to say to get one road.
And I'll mention on Route 80, there's four things, and Jeff had done this, the road score on now to the smart scale. There's an environmental score, which is not that high for our roads. They look at congestion, they look at safety improvements, and they look at economic impact. For us, the safety improvements is a big score, and the economic impact. If you do not have new businesses, new development taking place along a roadway in a corridor, it is very hard to get that score. And a lot of times, folks are still real hesitant to share what their plans are, and unless they've been forthcoming, coming to the county, and coming to the planning commission saying, I'm thinking about locating X-Y business here, or I've got an improved site plan, or this is what I'm doing, you can get points and credit for all that to go toward the project scoring better in the system. But folks are real hesitant to do that, and that hurts things a lot. We've had some examples recently where we're looking at projects, and we know that we've got fast food restaurants and commercial businesses getting ready to locate them on a corridor. And we tell the county, hey, we've already seen the site plans, we know they exist. Use that to get scores. Oh, no, 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 no. We've got to keep that top secret, we're going to give it a code name, don't speak of that, we don't want anybody knowing. And they miss out on opportunities. So the big thing is to look at economic development, businesses wanting to locate, and a lot of times, things score that you don't really think about, but that's the big thing on 80. As far as Century Farm Road goes, that's the road to landfill. And very, I guess, a large part of the county will probably never travel that road, but they generate stuff that travels it every day. And with the number of trash trucks in and out there and servicing... And with the number of trash trucks in and out there and servicing the landfill, and I know from an economic development standpoint, they look at schools, they look at transportation systems, they look at things like that, but solid waste is a very big issue. City of Bristol, the folks are dealing with it right now. So if you can't handle your solid waste, it makes it difficult to get businesses wanting to locate it. So hopefully, if that project is approved, it'll be a viable project via revenue sharing, that we can go in and make the much-needed improvements up there.
What do you know about it?
Applications are beginning on October first, and then they'll start scoring. I hope to know something shortly after the first of the year. If it's approved, funding will be amayed, amayable June into July. So hopefully we'll know something after the first of the year if it's an approved project or not.
Thank you, Daniel.
Want to do work with how it's planned, sort of, kind of, for the, the safety and economic development of smart scale? Like sixty-five percent of the work. You don't do the math, if you don't have anything on one road, you're behind it by a hurry. And as far as the undisclosed development, you don't have to, that application doesn't have to mean what that development is. It can be a box, ten thousand square foot retail, or whatever, ten thousand square foot built. It can be very generic. They, the folks up the road understand that.
And if there's site plans and different things, that's not shared. But it does greatly improve getting an economic score down to score on those roadways. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you all. I know I pitched you a lot. I do.
No. If you fancy this, we'll put it in the file.
You've been really good.
No, that's what we're here for.
Thank you all so much. Next, we have Dr. Cantrell with the Department of Health.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for permitting me some time this evening, and I will apologize, I spent the weekend with a cat that's not mine, and I'm coughing this cat. I just wanted to bring you, take this opportunity to come and, and give you some updates on health department activities. Just briefly, an overview, I provided you with some information, a little round and light folder. Our fold out there has on both sides of it some of the services that we're providing. But to summarize briefly, in the clinical services, we still offer a range of services, family planning, child health immunizations for kids and adults. We have a screening program for women for breast and cervical cancer. That's up to two-hundred-and-fifty percent of federal poverty level, women qualify if they don't have insurance. And it, the, the really wonderful thing about this program is if they're found to have breast or cervical cancer through this program, they're automatically eligible for Virginia Medicaid, full Medicaid to cover their healthcare until they're deemed cancer-free. So we accept referrals from other clinicians in the community, as long as they send them to us before they have that tissue diagnosis, we can enroll them in the program. And if it turns out that they're unfortunate enough to have cancer, they can at least not have to worry about the burden of paying for their treatment. And so that's a program that we serve about two-hundred, well, about three-hundred-and-twenty-five women a year in the district with. And with Medicaid expansion, I expect that a few fewer people will qualify because they already have Medicaid. But still, we know there are women out there who aren't getting screened, and who are getting cancer. We'd love to have more of them enter that program. We've added colposcopy services at the health department with a nurse practitioner that's trained to do that. And we're linked by Telmed to UVA GYN Oontology Clinic, and they're supervising the nurse practitioner. And that's the next step after a lady has an abnormal pad. It costs anywhere from, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars at a private office. And if they're uninsured, that usually is just a barrier that people can't afford to have that done. And so over time, we've developed some resources to, and gotten some support from UVA to purchase the colposcope and send the nurse practitioner to training, and they're supervised by GYN Ock at UVA by Telmed. So that's been a wonderful addition, I think. We've been doing it in another county for about, almost eighteen years. And so I'm over here covering Cumberland Plateau, and I guess I sort of skipped right on down, skipped that part of it. Across the state, it's been a lot more challenging to recruit physicians to public health positions. I've loved this position that I've held, and this is the fifth time I have covered Cumberland Plateau since I started with the health department in Little Wisco in nineteen ninety-one. But, so I've done this for about ten years altogether, and earlier this year, they combined the two districts under my direction. So I'm no longer the acting director, I'm the health director for both districts. And there's about four other situations in the state where they've done the same thing. What we did do in that regard was, in preparation for that, was create a position of the chief operating officer, which was Jamie Porter, who functioned to help with some of the administrative work of the buzz districts, eight jurisdictions. And so she's actually just moved on to a similar position in Richmond, so that position is in recruit again. But hopefully that will help me a whole lot, just covering three thousand square miles and all the meetings I'd love to get to, and make an effort to get there, but it will be helpful. So, back to the clinic services, we've added the GYN Oontology Clinic, Telmed, so we've also added PrEP. As you all know, we've, this whole region, Central Appalachia, was really significantly impacted by the injecting drug use and substance use problems. And if you remember the situation in Scott County, Indiana, they had outbreaks of hepatitis C, then they were followed by an outbreak of HIV infection. And so PrEP is an antiviral drug that you can give to people who are engaging in high-risk behaviors, and it reduces the risk of getting HIV if they're exposed to it by seventy percent. This is a grant-funded program, so it doesn't cost us any money for the drug or the lab test. It's being supported by PDH and Richmond, the central office. And so we've been very thankful to have that, because we've seen, as you can see there, some of our hepatitis B and C rates out here have been quite high. In fact, they're some of the highest in the state when they're compared to the rest of the state. And these are all what we call bloodborne pathogens. So if you get, they're acquired through sharing of blood. And so when you see folks with hepatitis B and hepatitis C at higher rates, you know they're at risk for HIV if there's somebody that they're exposed to. And so taking this one drug, one pill a day to reduce that risk is a tremendous help to them and also to our community, because if you don't have it, you can't spread it. And so that's been a program that we've been having for about two and a half years now. We are also later this month going to begin to offer treatment for hepatitis C in the health department, and that is also going to be funded by Richmond. We're sending a nurse practitioner, my son has been trained, and two other nurse practitioners, and so we'll be offering that. We, one of the requirements for getting treated is that the person has to apply for Medicaid first. The drugs have come down a lot in price, but an eight-week course of Eclipsa is still around twelve thousand dollars. It was fifty thousand dollars just a few months ago. So, and those are drugs that are being provided to us at no cost to us, but we want them to apply for Medicaid, because if they have Medicaid, then it'll cover it. And, and so far, as far as South West Virginia, where we've been treating for about six months now, out of seventy-five people, only one didn't qualify for Medicaid. So there's a pot of money that the health department in Richmond has set aside to pay for the lab, pay for the training, and help pay for the drug, but we really haven't had to touch much of the drug money, because they're getting Medicaid and it's paying for it. And the advantage to treating that is, again, treatment is prevention. If you get treated, ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of people now with the current regimens, with a pill a day for eight to twelve weeks, are cured in their hepatitis C, and then they can't spread it. And they can get it again, and part of their treatment is educating them on how to reduce their risk to reinfection. But the benefits in terms of not reducing the risk of cirrhosis and hepatitis C or carcinoma, which is the end stage of untreated Hep C, and the cost to the healthcare systems of taking care of folks with cirrhosis and hepatitis C or cancer are, you know, tremendous. And so treating, even though this is expensive treatment, to avoid those long-term consequences of not treating it is a financial benefit as well as a personal benefit to the folks that are infected. We still have the WIC program, and it's continuing and offering services at the health department here, as well as a satellite location in Castlewood. Environmental health program's going through some changes this year with a new database that has had its share of challenges, and they're ongoing, and we're working on those. And the transition to private soil evaluators around the state has begun as of July first. In our area, there really is very few, very few private soil evaluators, and there is a system for financial hardship, so that the health department would continue to do environmental health onsite work for people who are lower income. And then milk certification, we've been working to get Mr. Mitchell certified as a milk inspector for the Goshen Homestead Creamery that's in Honaker, and he's one or two steps away from being completely certified. We're contracted right now with a milk certification specialist from West Piedmont, who has to come down and do those inspections until he finishes up the last step. So we're optimistic that we're, you know, that the end is in sight for us being able to do that. Then just quickly, I've talked about the combining of the health districts due to the challenges in recruiting physicians. And then I wanted to also share with you, on the other hand, out there, some of the data that we're tracking related to the impact of addiction in our area, and give you some of those numbers related to hepatitis B and C. We look at acute hepatitis B, acute hepatitis C, meaning recently infected, and chronic B and C. And we look at the acute infections and the hep A, and with every report that you see there, either the district epidemiologist or the nurse makes contact with those patients as they're reported to us, gets, talks to them, visits them, and then does any further investigation. Sometimes we only get enough lab to know it looks like they have it, and then we have to do the rest of it. But we want to know who their contacts are, because there are some things that we can do if they, for hepatitis B and A, that we can protect the contacts from getting sick if we know about their infection in time. So those are numbers on a page, but they represent hours and hours of work by nurses and myself and the district epidemiologists tracking folks down. We've had some patients with as many as twenty-five or thirty contacts to track down, and try to find them within seven days if it's Hep, or fourteen days if it's Hep A, of their last contact, till we can give them vaccine, and hopefully reduce their risk of infection, and not have to have another person with all their contacts to treat. So you've heard about, I think, the hepatitis A outbreak that's been going on in the country for the last three years. It kind of worked its way from the West Coast, and it hit Kentucky about eighteen to twenty-four months ago. They've had around four thousand cases and several deaths, and over half of those were hospitalized. We've had in Virginia declared a hepatitis A outbreak early just a couple of months ago. Most of those cases were from cases in far South West Virginia. And in fact, the first uptick was in Cumberland Plateau. That was responsible for about thirty-five or forty percent of the cases in the state that caused the declaration of an outbreak. In the last month or six weeks, Mount Rogers Health District has kind of moved up to first place in terms of the number of acute hep As, but we're still seeing a fair share of those. So getting familiar with the signs and symptoms of hepatitis A, and understanding there's a vaccine to prevent it, that's very good at preventing it. We've got free vaccine, we've provided vaccine to all the jails, regional jails, to the inmates, as well as to the staff. There was one, I think, jail that actually went to Walmart and did their staff, but we've done the rest of the detention center up in, here in Russell County, we vaccinated those folks too. So there's a vaccine for A, and it's very, very effective. One shot of hepatitis A, that is a two-shot series, but one shot protects ninety-five percent of people for up to eleven years. If you get the second shot, six months later, then you're pretty much good. Eight, ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent protected for up to twenty years. So hepatitis A and B, we really focus on with people with injecting drug use, because we prevent those infections with vaccine. We have been working with two high-risk pregnancy programs, high-risk pregnancy and infants up to age two, especially focused on babies who've had the prenatal abstinence syndrome, who've had the fall syndrome after they're born, to try to work with the moms to connect them to recovery, and to work with the babies to get them into services if it looks like that they have ongoing issues. We have, those goals of those programs are to get moms into treatment and to reduce the preterm births, to get women to get regular prenatal care, early prenatal care, adequate prenatal care, have a full-term baby that's not a low birth, not a low birth weight. Also, see, I'm still seeing higher rates of overdose deaths from, started out as an opiate problem, but now I think it's as much meth and opiates, and we have benzos and some other things too. We are providing education about the risks, cause of risk for overdose and signs and symptoms of overdose, and still dispensing Narcan in a variety of community settings, as well as at the health department on a regular basis. We collaborated with, we've written two grants, one looking at, got twenty-five thousand dollars for this area for Russell County to look at the link of domestic violence with opiate use disorder and addiction. And that was last year, and then we got a continuation this year for twenty thousand five hundred more dollars to continue that work, working with a lot of community partners. We also collaborated with the drug courts in Cumberland Plateau and Little Wisco, and got some funding to work with people in drug court, and in juvenile law court in Little Wisco, and in all the adult drug courts here, to provide education about communal diseases, and also vaccinate them and their support systems, so the grant's paying for that too. Then we also got a grant, and just did this in July, to bring peer recovery specialist training out here. In the past, do people who wanted to become a peer recovery specialist, people who've been in long-term recovery and wanted to work with other people who were just getting into recovery to be their support. There's a training and a certification program, maybe you used to have to go to Roanoke or Lynchburg or Richmond for it, cost a thousand dollars, and you had to spend a week and a half in a motel and eat out. So I got a grant and got them to bring it to us. And so we brought the trainer, she did it eight straight days, we got twelve people trained, and three of them now have jobs, working as peer recovery supports. One of them from Russell County was in that program, who is employed now in that field. So it's better, it's a career, not just a job, you know, so it felt real good about that. And we're continuing to work with the drug courts in another project as well. So I guess that was kind of a quick overview of some of the things that we're doing. We have been asked, I'll just mention briefly, that we've, Lonzo has talked to us about moving here to the government, government center for next year, and so we're working with DREZ, Melissa Desmond there, to work on our space requirements in this facility. We do understand from her that our rent would go up, and so one of the things I would like to respectfully ask you tonight is if you could give us a statement of your financial support for us for this fiscal year. We haven't yet received that, that that would be greatly appreciated. I think we read in the paper that, I think you voted that we would be level funded, and we're certainly, we're, we're working with that right now when we move, and if we move, moving expenses as well as our higher rent, you know, will be a factor, I think, in the level funding, you know, budget. But we look forward to, it would be helpful for me to have something in writing in terms of our financial support from the county. And then the last thing is, I think we've seen some turnover, we've had some hot, some good jobs come into the area with Medicaid expansion, and so we've had to raise some salaries to retain our staff. So the combination of moving and higher rent, possibly and slightly higher salaries to retain the staff, we, you know, is going to make level funding just a little bit of a challenge, but like I said, we're working with that right now. So I will close with those remarks. I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Of me.
Dr. Cantrell, thank you so much. Yeah, we did level fund, you know, all the state agencies and regional jails. The health department does, you know, a great job, and, and, you know, operate very efficiently. I know, I send you numbers. The county's trying to do what we can. I know that we're trying to work with you to get you into here, which would benefit on our power services between your services and the DSS. And I think we can, we're getting close, if, you know, not to make a decision, if we can raise your rent, get enough of what we give you, then we'll work this out. But, no, it's Joe Godz. I'm Dr. Cantrell. But anyhow, we would love to have you as a partner here. I think this would be a great opportunity to share the services, have everything in a one-stop shop. You're close to DSS to serve, along with the patients, that's the way it worked previously. This is, this is a good partnership, we'll see what we can do.
And I agree with you, we'd be very glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Cantrell.
Next, we have some board appointments. Oh, yes, uh, hey, I've already approved, and I have signed him for the deal.
Well, very good stuff. They're all through with that.
Yep.
We'll save you some.
I do, we did want to pitch you.
Yeah. Paper, yeah, we'd like to have a picture. Kayla, Kayla.
Thank you very much for coming this time, we're very grateful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for what you did.
Oh, yes, we do love you all.
Well, let's move on now to air library board appointments. There are three vacancies, three vacancies.
Those folks are currently serving.
Yes, these folks are currently serving and this will be three-year terms. So we'll open the floor for any nominations.
I'd like to make the nomination to nominate Sharon Van Dyke.
Um, what, yes, one to time, really fine.
What do you think, what do you think, Kayla?
Do you share the?
You can either, you know, wait a second.
This is for paying for it, yes.
This is for paying his position?
Paying his position.
Well, or just more of the positions?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, okay, you're nominating Sharon, Sharon Van Dyke, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And we don't need a second, right, Kay? Correct? All right.
She's filled out a form.
Yeah, and she has filled out a form, okay. And Carl's going second, all right? For the first position, Sharon Van Dyke, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, air.
And Chair, I'd like to nominate Karen Davis.
All right, do we have a second?
She has filed an application.
I'll say.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
One opposed? All right, our third position.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Sharon Sargent and she has an application here. She's also been serving for a three-year term on the library board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Steve?
I would like to nominate Sherry Little.
Well, uh, okay. Sharon Little, here. All right, do we have a second for Sharon Little?
Well, I'll second it for the purposes of voting for it.
Okay, thank you. All right, then do this in reverse order, correct, Kay?
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion on these? On this third position, we have two people, Sharon Sargent and Sherry Little.
Reverse order.
All right, all those for Sherry Little. Okay, all right. And those for Sharon Sargent. Okay. So it looks like it'll be Sharon Van Dyke, Karen Davis, and Sharon Sargent. Next is our new business, which is approval of the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to read our August fifth minutes? Do we have a motion to accept them?
I'll, I'll move that we accept them on.
All right, Tim?
What we need to do is to release on the.
Okay.
I think, I think Vicki indicated that has been changed in the minutes. There were two previous agendas and the first one is, is correct. The second will be deleted.
With, with Vicki's correct, so.
Yeah, it was a topic right before the error.
Minutes with the corrections.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next thing under new business is approval of our expenditures, to have a motion to pay our bills.
So can I?
All right, Harry, Tim, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, everyone, pay our bills. Next thing we have is our citizens' comment period and I have a Ronnie Sharp. And if you'll step forward and give us your address and the subject of discussion, please.
Ronnie Sharp, Bell Pass, Virginia.
What's your address, sir?
Hillbuck, six seventy-two Hilldale, Virginia.
Six seventy-two, Rose Hill, got you.
We need to get a woman that's put in for, uh, all Russell County works so vicious stuff. I talked to Mr. Eaton about it. My wife was having to leave her home to come and, come to get some sleep at night. And we just wondered what we could get done about that.
You're in the board's.
What, it's okay, I'll, you want me to go ahead and speak in this man's chair? What, his situation is, he's got a neighbor that has been playing music extremely loud and deputies have been up there like, how many occasions through?
About twelve, fifteen times.
Yeah, okay, about twelve, fifteen times. And when they come, he turns it down, when they leave, he turns it back up. And his, the way his wife works and stuff like that, she can't rest and the kids. Some of the music I, if I'm not.
It's got the airport.
It's pretty vulgar music that they're playing. So is that okay if I speak in regards to that, sir? Because that's what you discussed with me about.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very difficult leaving home when you got to take grand children away too.
I've had, I've had some complaints too, um, this was a fourth one where he was asking.
Last time, last time we had a police officer, he said, he said the guy said he would not turn it down. That it wasn't no law, and said it wouldn't be turned down for no reason. And he plays like, starts at four o'clock in the evening, he never pushes up four o'clock next morning. So I've got one grandchild that's got autism and one is thirteen, trying to go to school. And he don't get very much sleep.
One said, do we have any kind of noise ordinance?
We've been working on it.
We have a draft right now, unless you're pretty perfect timing. As I said, we actually have a draft right now, we're doing on the noise ordinance. And he has, has a copy of it right now. The board supervisors have to look at it, the sheriff's department, the Commonwealth attorney, it's going, you know, going through the process. This is a perfect opportunity.
The planning commission needs to look at it too. Do they give her other ordinance we have? And then we'll review it.
From a legal perspective.
He'll take his speakers and sit them down. He'll take his speakers and sit them down on the porch, and they'll sit there and play all night long. And neighbors, we tried to get a petition signed, they wouldn't sign, they obscured it. It's good to get the petition signed.
And with any noise ordinance, we have to, you know, look at it, how it applies to our county, because each county is different. Our neighbor is different.
Yeah, we had one from Lou in Castlewood area, so Kay, he's been working on this.
Seriously great to invite him.
I was going to remind this board that we had a gentleman come with the same problem. And we started the ball rolling, so I'm going to attest that we are working on that.
Okay. Well, we'll get this, this done, but.
Lonzo, give us the issue that you can bring it to the board, maybe next board meeting.
What concerned me, because I service you all up there in that area, but when I come up there and listen to it, you can't curse in public, but you can play that and it was very vulgar, it was very, it was so horrible.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it was very bad for, I mean, not young, old, whatever it may be, that is unacceptable.
Yeah, it's, it's not, for people listening, no one actually listens to stuff like that now. Hey, I appreciate everything you all do, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next, constitutional officers' reports and requests. Let's see, we have folks here. All right, the county attorney reports and requests, Katie? Oh, I'm sorry, let me ask anyone else in the public, anybody else want to make their comment or have anything to say for, to us?
I would just like to point out that you just put two Sharrons and two Karens on the same board.
Ah, you're going to be like a schoolteacher, you're going to have name tags. Sorry, Kelly.
That's all right, they're all good.
Sharon, yes, and Sharon, yes.
All right, nobody else in touch, all right, now, Katie?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The first thing on the agenda under, under my report is the Russell County Sheriff, uh, Russell County Sheriff Department vehicles a surplus. And I've spoken with Lonzo and, and the situation that we're in, they're actually not surplus property. And this is, this contract, the enterprise, we have a trading bond. And the code actually differentiates between surplus property and selling other personal property in fifteen point two dash nine fifty-one, which states that it can be, that we can sell and otherwise dispose of within, outside the locality's personal property, including any interest right or estate therein. And then it goes on to say, in addition, localities may sell and otherwise dispose of surplus materials and, and sort of defines the process of how that's sold. What we're doing here is the lease, which is the second item that I have for your all's approval. Those, those vehicles are being traded in and, and they're reflected into the contract price that we have. So, and, and another reason they're not surplus property is they, you know, they're not, they are needed. It's a trade as opposed to this property is no longer needed and being disposed of. So that is actually the proper way to say it. So that section, and there doesn't need to be any kind of declaration there. And under number two, the lease I just mentioned with enterprise, I have reviewed that. And I've discussed, I've discussed it with the sheriff and, and with Lonzo. And I do think that's an appropriate contract to sign. Again, it's my understanding and Lonzo and the sheriff's office have been involved in the financial savings that this contract is, is going to hopefully bring to the county by, you know, eliminating, my understanding is eliminating a significant portion of the maintenance costs that the county was incurring for the vehicles which were owned. So I do think if it is the board's desire to enter into this contract, that it's a valid contract and I don't have any concerns about it. You would need, if you do wish to approve, you would need to approve the contract and authorize the signing of all the titles of the vehicle, the transfer of the vehicles under that lease agreement.
So you need a motion from us, a second and a vote, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a motion from the board members?
I'll make a motion, we authorize the sheriff to enter into this contract and that we authorize him to trade those vehicles in or transfer those vehicles in as part of this. I'll go ahead and make that motion, what you're saying.
And I'll go ahead and sign it.
And authorize the chairman to sign the lease agreement.
Okay.
I'll say.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, you're talking about savings upward to ninety thousand dollars a year by doing this, isn't that correct, Lonzo?
Yes, yes, sir.
It's just Republican, that's the reason we're doing this, it's one of the lease program. It looks like maintenance is always a big issue with these, with the vehicles.
There's many other counties that have taken the same methodology. And we, we expand, you know, the sheriffs to, to ensure that their safety within the county, you put on a lot of miles. Russell County has four hundred and seventy-seven square miles to, we do a lot of travel. So if we look at the lease program versus my program, it's the same way that a lot of other rural and urban counties and municipalities are doing. We can first save ninety thousand just between the purchases and the maintenance on a annual basis, not counting what will save in fuel costs because these are more fuel-efficient vehicles. And like I stated earlier, that other counties are doing it, Wise County, McKinnon County, Abbott and, you know, Pulaski County with county, the, the, the programs on, and so does the state use the same program just that we are actually, you know, piggybacking on the state contracts. So this is a program that the state police use, they keep good vehicles. We can do it at a reduced cost, it saves in fuel, saves in maintenance, saves in downtime. So that way, if a deputy has a car go down, we're not trying to find one to replace it to getting back out on the road during a shift. These, these are maintained and controlled and repaired by the company. So it is a very good program.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion, Steve, a second by David, and our discussion, it is a ninety thousand dollar savings a year for us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have the Dank Depot purchase.
Yes, and there is a, excuse me, there is a deed of, a purchase attached to the, to the agenda for the purchase of property owned by CSX where the Dank Depot is. I have reviewed the deed and I'm generally okay with it. But the one concern I do have is that in the use section of that deed, there's language that would prohibit recreational use, which I think is an anticipated use of the property. I don't really foresee any issue in being able to resolve that. So I'm comfortable if you want to approve that, if, if you do want to move forward with the purchase of that property, to approve the purchase and approve the deed subject to final revisions and approval of legal counsel. And that way I can get that one issue resolved.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the lease per the attorney's approval. How did you say that? I didn't write that down.
Oh, it's the deed.
The deed, okay. We're not leasing, we're not there yet, right? Okay, all right. The deed to the CSX property, gotcha, okay.
Approve the deed, subject to final revision and final approval of legal counsel.
Thank you.
We have a motion, Bill Lurde, do we have a second?
Second.
Steve, all right, any further discussion?
I think you noted that the cost of this is only twenty-five hundred dollars, I think. And that was basically for environmental.
Environmental.
And that'll be reimbursed through a grant.
Yes, the cost.
So it's just, it's not a true cost to the county, it'll be, we'll be getting our money.
Yes, the way it worked out, CSX wanted to do their own environmental review and so they did. And then they decided they would charge us for the environmental review since they were gifting it to us, so to speak. So the grant will help pay for the environmental review, so it's just a wash.
It was a one-dollar purchase.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item is the, the lease agreement with, with Contoura for the, for property located in Dank, for the community association. And my recommendation would be to just table this, this matter until next month. I do need to speak with them for one, for a couple of minor changes to that and to see kind of where we are in the process. So my, my advice would be to just table that, that lease agreement at this time.
Lynn, good with you?
Yes, I'm very good with that, thank you.
All right, and next, Katie?
The last thing we have that we added to the agenda are the bylaws for the Russell County PSA, the newly incorporated PSA. And I, I have worked with special counsel for, for the board of supervisors, Mr. Kilgore, throughout this project, but I have, I know. But I have, um, I need to do a final review of those bylaws. I do think that they're gonna be okay, so I'm comfortable, if you all are comfortable, with you all approving.
Madam Chair?
With you all approving those bylaws, subject to final approval of legal counsel, just to make sure that there's no.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve those bylaws pending final review by the county attorney. I'll say.
Any further discussion? Any thoughts? All right, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right. Now this leads us to the county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports and requests, of course, is the long-awaited Russell County Health Insurance, Employee Health Insurance Contract. We just implemented a new health insurance program with Cigna that started on September the first. Uh, after many months of negotiation with Ballot, uh, uh, with our committees and our appointments. And we finally have got a, uh, we've got a complete, really good health insurance program in place, like I said, with Cigna for our, the county employees. That includes the sheriffs, the school park, the school board, uh, that began on nine-one. The, uh, the employees have already received their, uh, their health insurance cards, they're in place. So, uh, that is one more, uh, issue that we had with Ballot at the time. And we kept, uh, negotiating with the cost and the cost, and we finally had to go in with Cigna to get the cost contained. So that was a cost savings to the county also. Next on county administrator reports and requests is, of course, um, this is the PSA, this is Belfast and the Glade Hollow Water Project Funding. On the Belfast project, uh, by the office of the governor and on August the twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, as part of a thirteen point four million dollar block grant award, the Russell County, uh, the Belfast Water Line Extension Project Phase Two was awarded six hundred and thirty dot thousand dollars in grants. Between the grants from the coal field, and Steve can speak into this, between the coal field and Cumberland Plateau, this total project is one hundred percent grant funded, one hundred percent, all of it. The second one is the Glade Hollow Projects Water Project. And again, we was trying to get this one one hundred percent grant funded based off the users. And of this total project of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars, seven hundred and eighteen thousand was grant funded. The grant funding came from five hundred and twenty-three thousand from B D H. Uh, Coal Field Water Development Fund was seventy-five thousand. Southwest Virginia Water and Wastewater Fund was a hundred and twenty thousand in grant, or a total grant of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, with only a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar line on this. That was guaranteed by the number of users based off the revenue that will come off, of the revenue. So it will pay for itself. Next.
Lonzo, can I stop just a minute? I, I just, Belfast Project is, is in my district and I've worked the whole last four years to try to get this, three public meetings, knocking on doors, going house to house. And I just wanted to take this time to say thank you, thank you, thank you, every agency, every entity, everybody that worked with me to get this. This is one hundred percent grant paid for, and those folks from behind Belfast School, out from the mountain road, will have good, clean water that they've been waiting on for years. And I just can't thank all the folks that helped work and get this. Thank you. Hats off to you folks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is another good news. Um, we had an inspection by, with the Animal County, uh, Animal Shelter from the Virginia Department of Animal Control Services. And another good year of inspections. Uh, we had an inspection on the, on August the twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, we had a, an inspection of all the animals on the facility, the animal care, and again, Russell County ranked very high in the, in the state rankings. Uh, we're actually, uh, in the top five of the animal shelters within the state of Virginia behind the No Kills. So we did have a few dogs that were injured, but other than that, were, were, were very high ranked as animal shelter in the state of Virginia. Next is the, uh, VACO meeting in Washington County for Regions Twelve and Thirteen on September the twelfth from two to four P M at the Washington County Board of Supervisors Auditorium. This is hosted by the Washington County Board of Supervisors. This, um, meeting is for all local legislators to come together for issues and governmental issues and legislative issues that will be before the state legislature in this, in the winter. Yeah. So, uh, this is the time to come together, decide what we need to work on. Um, next on the county administrator, uh, reports is the Russell County Tourism Member Resignation. I have a resignation from Marquita Horton, uh, and I need a motion on that one to accept the resignation. So move. Steve.
All those in favor?
Uh, excuse me? It's my district.
That was my question.
Okay, um, do you want me to make my, um, new nominee for my district my person at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, I would, uh, this is my district, and I do hate to see Marquita go. She's an excellent organizer, very versed, very well spoken, knew how to make contacts, but due to her time and her other obligations work, she just didn't think she could handle it. And at this time, I want to nominate Danny Altizer. Mr. Altizer has lived in the Belfast community forever and ever. He's retired from working in the mines. He's very well spoken, very well traveled, and he is a leader in the community of Belfast, and I think he'd be an excellent asset to the tourism committee. So at this time, I want to nominate Danny Altizer. Thank you, Harry. Any comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank y'all much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, the only county manager's supervisor's request is an approval for a, the Virginia Supreme Court, uh, Virginia Drug Treatment Court Grant for ninety thousand dollars. This is, uh, this was put in by Mr. Carter for two positions to add to the community work program, which is saving us, you know, enormous amount of labor costs and jail costs. So between the, both of, both the labor costs and the jail costs, we're looking over probably one point two million dollars years in savings. So this is a grant from the Virginia Supreme Court, uh, for ninety thousand dollars. So I need a motion.
See it, all right? David?
Second.
Second from Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor? We'll be happy to accept ninety thousand dollars, won't we?
Next is another grant. This is the Tobacco Commission Grant for the Honaker and Castlewood Canneries. This is a total grant from the Tobacco Commission in one hundred and one, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for the equipment to upgrade, improve, equipment furnished and otherwise undertake in both the Russell County Canneries Revitalization Project. This, I need a motion for approval of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars in grants for upgrades. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second from Lou. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Diane? We have been working on, and Miss Donna's not there, I guess she's, we're having our discussions. You want to talk?
Oh, gosh, I, I'm not sure if I'm.
This is part of the grant equipment that you put in.
The question I, I had was on the jars. Can you get a univers, can you get a universal? If you are changing.
Sealer?
Yeah, I don't know if you're changing that, but if you are. Mr. Raines has brought it my attention, it'd be nice to have different cans besides one type of.
That's a Dave Jesse question. I, I know that he, and that sealer that you're talking about is, well, those two sealers, one in each county or, or canary is, is definitely, definitely something that, that patrons to the canneries really want, or the, or the metal cans back. And, and that sealer has to be there if the metal cans are gonna be there. I know that, that Dave Jesse at one point had said to me that he, he went through a whole one-day training session with the ball folks that own that can, that sealer, and he learned all the aspects of it, and, and I'm pretty sure that there are separate plates that go in that sealer to different sizes to, to fit different size cans. So to answer your question, it is doable for sure. I have no idea what the cost of that would be or whatever, but I think it's doable.
Whether it's a sixteen-ounce can or thirty-two-ounce can.
We'd be glad to look at that. Actually, Donna, if she could put that on her notes, she, uh, or Katie, you know, would be looking at these equipment issues. On their original submission of the grant, it had, you know, uh, grant funding for, for stuff for processing meats, stuff that we actually developed in the county, grew in the county, could utilize in the county, so it was kind of tabbed around that. So we'd be glad to look at the county issue.
There's a whole list of those things. And one, there's one thing that really stands out in my mind right now is that pulper, the machine that people use to, to, um, make their apple sauce and apple butters and their tomato juice and that thing, which is used almost every day that the canneries are open. And, and those are, are, I can't tell you but right now, but they're very expensive and, and they're, they're one of those items that definitely is needed in both canneries, so.
Do you have a ballpark here of the percentage of people that wants the cans?
Cans right now? No, I don't, you know, they basically get away with the cans and just bought a, a few, I guess I should say. I do know that a couple of weeks ago, Molly in Castlewood said that Terry was coming to take another load to Honaker or so from down there of the cans. So evidently they're using, they're using cans both places. But I know that there are a lot of folks that have succumbed to using their own recycling their, their glass jars, so. But there's still those, those out there that are really kind of holding off for the, holding out for the cans to come back, so. But I have no idea how many, what kind of percentage that is.
Okay, thank you. Majority of what we give for the can utilization is for the meat processing, you know, protein.
Yeah, I'd like to say one more thing before we go on, if it's okay, Madam Chair. Uh, I think we owe a gratitude to Senator Chafin and Delegate Moorefield and Sandy Radliff. While we were in Richmond, they battled for us and fought while we were there at the presentation to get funding for our projects. And, uh, they really went to bat for us and fought for Russell County so we could get the funding that we needed.
Full funding.
Full funding.
The stamp, the stamp recommendation was to fund half of it, and they went to bat and got a hundred percent of that.
Yeah, I just want, I think we ought to appreciate that, I mean, that's, that's obvious.
Absolutely.
All right, well, we have a, uh, first by David, a second by Lou. All those in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is another grant from the Tobacco Commission. This is to the Russell County Firegrounds. This is an amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And this is to fund the project proving to upgrade the, the firegrounds on the, uh, for, you know, multiple, multiple use facility. You know, everyone knows that the building right now is, I was down there during the heat, it has no H V C, has no windows, barely any doors. We have to upgrade the handicap to it. So, uh, this is to be able to modernize the firegrounds of Tobacco Commission that Mr. Eakb spoke of being Chafin and Sandy Radliff. And we was all up there, the board supervisors is there advocating for this, and they put it on there. So it's, I need a, a motion to accept two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the Russell County Fire Association Upgrade Project, Revitalization Project. I'll make that motion. Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Steve?
I will, if you, if you will indulge me, I will make a small statement concerning the, uh, Russell County Fair and the facilities there. This upgrade will not only benefit the fair, it will benefit many things that can happen at that facility because it stays empty. And so this is going, I think this is going to supply away for the county to be able to use extra meeting space or whatever it needs to have done. So, uh, I, I just want to clarify that for the, for the community to understand that, that the facility will be able to be really utilized.
Basically, you're right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Yep, one of the proposals in the scope of the project to get that level of funding was Virginia Tech as a partner in this. Actually, Virginia Tech volunteered their services for the design of the new building. So this has had a lot of partners in with it. Uh, we can use it as an educational facility too, and a marketing facility, a meeting facility, a community facility. This, this has the opportunity, once we do the remodeling, to be able to get it, you know, with H V C, that's a big, and electrical. So this will give many opportunities to that area. And that was Mr. Linder's purpose in this and Mr. Chafin's purpose in this. Next on the county administrator reports and requests is, uh, next one is to the, another Tobacco Commission and a Virginia Department of Animal Control Services feasibility study grant. This is for the meat processing facility feasibility study at the Hansonville area. This was included in part by request by Senator Chafin in the fire ground grant. It, uh, it pays for a Tobacco Commission, like I said, and Virginia Department of Animal Control for meat processing facility study grant. I need an approval for this one for, in a total amount of, I think it's like thirty-two thousand? Thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. So move. Second.
Steve? All right, any discussion? All right, I want to discuss, this will be, this, the cost of this is not gonna be on Russell County. It is being paid by agents, is correct?
Yes, ma'am. The break, the breakdown on, there is actually three partners in this. The Tobacco Commission is seventeen thousand, five hundred. The, uh, Virginia Department of, uh, Animal Control Services was eighty-seven fifty, and the remaining seven thousand, seventy dollars is from the Virginia Coal Field Economic Development Authority.
Motion made by David, second by Steve. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is authorization for disposal truck purchase and a sale of a disposal truck. Um, I need a motion to approve the, uh, purchase through the state contract for the National Auto Fleet Group. Or a, uh, this disposal truck is up for replacement. Uh, what we do, we purchase one and then we trade it in. And actually, on the last purchase and sale that we had, we actually made money on it because we, we purchased trucks under state contract and sell them on the open market at market value. And, uh, these trucks that we are replacing every twenty-four to thirty months, it's running us no more than about two thousand dollars a month to operate. This is unheard of, so I need a motion to approve for the purchase of disposal truck purchase and the sale of disposal truck. I'll make that motion. I'll say.
I'll say.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now that we got all the money, now we got to get a little bit back. Watch everybody's eyes roll, thank you. Okay, uh, the, and this is good to a good cause. This is the, a request from the Cumberland Plateau Regional Housing Authority for payment in lieu of taxes for the HUD, uh, departments, so, uh, it's a waiver that we give annually that we share in the payment for, you know, the request for the, uh, the housing development authority for people that are underserved.
And the chair make a motion to approve this.
All right, second, second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed?
The next one is, this was funding coming in. This is authorization for the Russell County Library Board funding, a total of seven thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents Kelly could use. This is in, this is funding that came from the Prince of Library in Lebanon, donated forty-five hundred dollars to the library, and the Russell County Genealogy Group donated twenty-six hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents to the Russell County Public Library Trustees for a total allocation of seven thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents for them to be able to spend into their budget for the needs of the Russell County Library Programs.
Need a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I have to add that to their budget, yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion, we add that amount to their budget, authorize them to spend it.
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the Russell County Planning Commission plat, I need approval of the plat in, in the packet for the Russell County Planning Commission.
This is in, uh, Clark's Valley, Terry? Correct?
Yes, it's two tracks, yeah. Track one and two, all we're doing is taking the small amount off of two, adding it to one, got the new totals, it's a joint land on, just shows a new acreage, it's no little difference, we adjusting. Yeah, we've looked at it, approved it, so.
I'll make that money.
All right, second?
Second.
Steve? Need more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Next, um, the County Ministry of Request, uh, is tribal request. I have, uh, Frieda Sweeney and Crystal Wyatt for a BAI class in Charlottesville on September thirtieth through ten one nineteen. I need approval on the tribal.
So move.
I'll say.
I have, uh...
Can we do these all at the same time? All at once? Yeah, all right. Okay.
Let me go through, you give me one motion. Let me get to do the whole block. Okay, next one, of course, is Kelly's going to spend some of the money, again. Uh, Kelly McBride for the Library of Virginia Meeting in Richmond, uh, nineteen through twenty. Betsy Summerfield, that has to attend the National Emergency Management Institute. Jess Powers also has to attend the National Emergency Institute. Next is, uh, myself, I got to attend DAQ Plan Review Training in Roanoke along with Mickey Ray on the Plan Reviewing Roanoke, Virginia for DAQ. One motion.
I need to, Will, I need to draw my motion.
All, all.
Yeah, let me draw my motion and, and it's okay, Tim, I'm gonna, to approve all of them.
Do all at the same time, all right? Is that what you're gonna do, David?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. David's making a motion and we approve all, second?
I'll say.
And Harry?
Very good.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the County Ministry of Reports is the, uh, the item that was added for the shared department request for reimbursement to the Department of, uh...
Justice.
Yeah, Department Criminal Justice Services, figure that afternoon, for twelve hundred dollars through their asset, uh, forfeiture asset program. I need a pro, uh, a motion for twelve hundred dollars for reimbursement.
So move.
Second?
I'll say.
All, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, the confused County Ministry of Reports and requests.
All right. Okay, um, our next meeting will be October, seven, all right? Next meeting, October the seventh. And do I now have a motion for adjournment? Okay. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, ten. Do you have any comment?
Uh, I'm good, thank you.
Lou?
Oh, no, I have comments, okay.
Oh, fine, go ahead, Lou. Go ahead.
Okay, um, today we all have a little piece of paper that was placed at our desk, um, and it's, um, learn how to keep your land intact and in the family, preparing for generation next workshop, um, September twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, which will be at the Russell County, uh, Conference Center, and this was provided to me by Bill World with Virginia Extension, so you can contact them at eight eight nine, eight oh five six. Thank you for this, and also I have a question to the board concerning the, um, um, new authority, water authority, and I was just wondering if, if we're still going to be looking at, um, the lane group doing some kind of, um, assessment, engineering, something at the, on the Castlewood end, because we still have a lot of issues, that I wanted an independent study, and I know we voted on that last year to do that, and we have not followed through with that, so, uh, I'm just wondering, that's hanging out there, and I just wanted to know where it was.
What, uh, what BRA has agreed to do is they want rate study, which will include Castlewood, the entire, entire area, and also what they call determined operations plan, which I would call a comprehensive business plan for the entire entity. So, yeah, Lane, I think, uh, the PSA had agreed that they would go under average pyramid and use Lane. The funding will come through the TSA in the, in the amount of a grant attached on to one of their projects.
The Glade Hall.
Glade Hall.
Just attached to the Glade Hall.
And they're going to pay for the whole thing. One other thing I will mention, and, and I think this is monumental, that BRA had agreed to do this, in order to make the entity, uh, stronger, I guess, and give us, and give us a financially solid, they've agreed to extend, or actually not delete, but extend the term of payments by three years on all of the zero percent loans that are out there, which means that they won't have to pay the payment on any of those zero percent loans for three years. Now, and you're not making a payment, but what that amounts to, that, that lets them accumulate right at thirty-two thousand dollars a month in debt payments that they will be able to use to buy equipment, uh, maybe pay off some debts, uh, do some things, do some leak detection, particularly down in Castlewood, and do a lot of these things that need to be done, buy equipment such as that, so, I think that's just absolutely, you know, we couldn't have asked for a, for a bid. We were talking, yeah, they, they did us one bet, actually, so, yeah, Lane, Lane is clean.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were going to have some sort of an independent study somewhere along the way so that we can really get this system fixed, working for all the county, and particularly those that are so affected in my area with some outrageous, still outrageous, water mules.
Lou, I think, um, they had said they were going to have two public hearings, not public hearings, but public, think, two.
Information.
Information, maybe.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, and that way everybody will hear where it is, what they're doing, and it'll be here at the government center for it.
Is that going to be in the Lebanon news for information purposes?
It'll be, the one on the twenty-third, in the one on the twenty-third down at the college, the college is auditorium. On the twenty-third, and at the other end, there's an auditorium down there.
I've got it on the side. You put it up on, it's above the sign.
Oh, you mean, is this building not?
Yeah, not, not, wait.
Southwest, okay.
Yes, yes.
Because my folks wouldn't be able to travel, some of them wouldn't be able to travel that far.
We're in the building.
Yes, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, the first is on the twenty-third, and I think at six o'clock, and it'll be in that auditorium building there. I think the government's, the conference center was tied it, that's reasonable.
If you could put that out on, on our social media, I'll pick that up on mine, and we'll share it, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Just echo what Ms. Reed said, that BRA, R, D, V, H, DQ, everyone is working very well with us on these projects, and one, they did, they wanted the rate study and the business plan and the asset plan, and they're paying for all of it. And they are also paying for the bond closing, all the bond closing, they're paying for it. So they're paying for every one of the studies, they're paying for all of the bond closing, and so we went out and re-requested, you know, what they could do, either in principle forgiveness, or what they could do to help us out in operations because of the age of the systems. One of the suggestions was, and I still, we're not still giving up on the principal forgiveness, they said we will defer all your zero percent loans for three years. So if you'll take that money and put in your, your equipment, and your, and what you need in the infrastructure, they were agreed to that, but we're still not giving up on the principal forgiveness, are we? No.
That's in future, right.
Yes, we didn't want to get greedy.
So, what that equates to, like Steve said, I think it's about one point three million?
Thirty-two thousand dollars a month, so multiply that to thirty-six, and that'll, you know, it's over a million dollars, you know, and, and it's not that you're not going to have to pay it, it's just, it's a catch-up. It's kind of like when the bank sends you the notice out, you're not going to make the pay, make the payment here in a month or two.
These are already...
Send it out thirty-six.
These are already on zero percent loans, and so this gives us an opportunity to put more infrastructure in place to raise the revenue like Belfast Project, that's one hundred, you know, we're adding on additional customers in Glade and in Belfast.
More revenue.
More revenue.
Thank you, everybody that helped in Belfast, all right? Lou, anything else to you?
I'm good, thank you for asking.
Carl?
I have nothing further to add.
David?
Yes, ma'am, I have one thing here, please. Uh, it gives me great honor to make this motion. Uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, that we, uh, honor Ms. Teresa M. Chaffin, former judge in the Virginia Court of Appeals, now, uh, a Russell County native and a member of the Virginia Supreme Court. That is absolute, absolutely, first female, that is absolutely awesome.
First justice.
Yeah, that's right. So, I would like for our board to consider, uh, being able to purchase an engraved gavel for her, to be able to take with her to, uh, Richmond, and also I'd like to, in that motion, to provide an actual, uh, photograph of her to be able to be hung, uh, in the, either in the government center or the courthouse in Russell County, uh, to be able to, to acknowledge this great accomplishment. It's a great day for Russell County to have this happen, and I, I, I know everybody's proud. I was proud Friday, I know some of you that attended was very proud, uh, of it, and, uh, we made history, actually, we made history, so.
Second to that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Steve?
Okay. I want everybody to remember, it's October the fifth, October the fifth, we have, this will be the second Harmony Festival, it's sponsored by Mountain Movers, and actually it's part of the Lebanon Bi-Centennial Celebration. I think we do, Mountain Movers starts at, what, seven-thirty with a breakfast?
Starts at seven with breakfast, and then the festival starts at nine.
Seven. I already missed breakfast, no kidding. It's all free. All free, and that's at the cafeteria, it'll be out at primary school, and if you were there last year, I think there's a car show, and there's probably some music, also some vendors, such as that, and I think that goes until about three o'clock, isn't that right, Kayla?
Yes.
About three o'clock, and then we give you a little break, and then I think Rhonda Vincent's supposed to be, uh, pick up in the evening as part of the town's, uh, Bi-Centennial Celebration, so Saturday on the fifth will be a big day, so get ready for it, be perfect weather, I'm sure.
All right. Harry?
I'd just like to say Jess Powers has got moved in, new emergency management under the vote of restoration, redone some of that, and it's a good location for her, and she'll be able to get some grants that Russell County wasn't able to get before, so, I think that'll work out really well.
All right, good. All right, now I'll take a motion to adjourn, and any, oh, one more? Lots.
While we're talking, we're getting, uh, we will be dedicating hopefully here within the next two weeks, uh, and we'll put out the date on, on social media, we're opening up the Lebanon New Disposal Track.
Yes.
Disposal site.
Yes. Yes, very interesting.
Got to get out the location.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor? October the seventh.